We do have a corner and I'll call us to order. Yes, please.
Mr. Chairman, if I might just mention a little bit of information before we get into the budget discussion. And I can go over this with Gene. I believe I forwarded this email to you all today from Jeff Russell, but I went ahead and printed out the spreadsheet that went with it. He, of course, came here at our last day meeting and spoke. But he sent an email today that they're needing to have some stuff in line by mid-May, even though we set our public hearing for later. They would like to have a list of any roads that we want them looking at or considering sooner than later, so...
How much money do they have?
They have enough money. He had about 1.1 million dollars is what he indicated to us the other day.
Well, how many miles does that calculate out to be?
Depends on which one of their bogus numbers you want to look at.
I was getting ready to say three tickets.
As far as rural rustic goes, or...
Well, they said $150,000 a mile to just tar and chip it.
To do rural rustic?
Yep.
He gave me approximate distance in his email. Let me pull it up here. We're looking at adding approximately six miles of new rural rustic projects to the six-year plan.
Well, what's that work out to a mile? It's more than $150,000, I think, isn't it?
$900,000 would be 150.
Okay.
So...
I guess there's $100,000 worth of engineering.
Well, you just about put every rural rustic road that he says qualifies on this sheet on that. Except for Millers Creek. They got 5.27.
Well, that qualifies, but it don't mean anybody wants it. I don't know anybody but the beer drinkers that use that out to Pulaski County line. There's nobody lives out there. It's beyond the Feet Creek Road.
You all, we have a couple of options. I mean, if you want to go down by district and supervisor's name, a couple of them, or if you want to let the supervisor send two or three of them in, or prioritize them and send them in, and then we'll send a list to Jeff to review and see what's there. And, you know, we'll copy all of you all on it. And then he can give us some estimates and recommendations. You do see he's got yes and no on most of them where they meet the six, the rural rustic concept, or if they don't.
And the SSYP's already on the six-year plan.
They're on secondary six-year plan already, that's correct.
Stephen, there was one road that I was asked about up there on A-Frame, and I've read this thing about four times, I can't find it.
I don't see it either.
Don't worry.
It may not, this may not be all the roads in the county. But it should be, 'cause...
What's SSYP?
SSYP means it's already on the secondary six-year plan.
Okay.
I'll ask him about that one. 'Cause you just had, didn't do some work up there, requested they did some work up there. And it is state-maintained, just a dirt road.
Stephen, do you think that they've made a mistake? Or, wait a minute. I was looking at Race Track Road, but that is... Is Race Track Road the one that runs from Blacklick to the Race Track?
Nope, it runs from Radio Drive.
Radio Drive, okay, sorry.
Yeah, back through there.
If there's nothing in that last column, does that mean it's not been evaluated yet?
That, right now, from my understanding from him, that they haven't evaluated, or he doesn't have it updated on this list. I don't think they've evaluated those yet. And his comment was basically to meet the rural rustic generally must have a traffic count equal to or greater than 50 vehicles per day. Finished roadway must be 14 to 16 feet in width with two feet shoulders and a three-foot wide ditch where needed. All construction, including new slopes and widening, should be able within the existing right-of-way, and the construction should follow the existing alignment. So that's just the general guidelines they go by. Basically, that's to keep from new fence and new right-of-way and any of that.
Well, all the ones that they've got marked, yes. Except for Dry Pond Road and Millers Creek adds up to 5.17.
Well, I've got a request from Millers Creek. I'd like we'd put in a mile and a half of Millers Creek, but not the whole thing. There, there, there's some problems with it. Part of Millers Creek won't qualify, it's not 16 feet wide. After you pass Loving Good's Gate out there, you know where I'm talking about. It's not 12 feet wide down through there, and they got right-of-way problems on both sides, one of them being a national park. And the other side is a non-resident stinker.
Heather Lane is where it ends now with the latest secondary six-year, is that correct?
Yep.
And you'd like to have another 1.5 miles, you're saying?
Yep.
Okay.
And every other place we've got in that part of the district, you get down in there and Stillwell and some of those across the river from Bearin Springs. And nobody lives on those roads and nobody much uses them. But all of our other road problems is they're not in the state system now. Like that thing at Jewel Lane out there.
Mm-hmm.
That really would help a lot of people and it'd help the school bus, but that's one of those old mess-ups that's not in the system.
So how many miles have we got totaled, 6.1?
Six miles is what he estimated.
Six miles.
Stephen, did you see Doe Run or Deer Run on there? It's a little short road that goes off of Rome, and I'm sure it hadn't been evaluated.
Yeah, Doe Runs on there, it's 731.
And what does it show, the distance, quarter mile?
.45.
The school bus goes down there, can't turn around. Maybe three families living down there and it's dead end at the gate. But the bus goes down there, and for a long time, they didn't even plow it, when it snowed. But there's no cul-de-sac at the end of it. The bus has to pull up in somebody's yard to turn around.
That's one you would like for them to look at also?
Yeah, unless we think of something better. Like I said, the, all these that are high-traveled roads are not in the system.
It's not been evaluated, but...
The problem is, is Rome, Doe comes off of Rome. And is that part of it hard-surfaced?
Rome is.
Rome is?
And Doe turns off, dives off, you know where Charles Freeman lives? And Tony Freeman and some nesters live down in there. And some Scots live down in there. Coy, you know where I'm talking about.
I was wondering, 'cause they show Rome Road on here also.
Well, Rome is in pretty good shape.
Okay, now, the upper, upper end of Walton Furnace Road, after you go across the last cattle. We're torn up the damn...
It's all in your district. Oh, it's in your district.
Which one of, which one of them, it's got Walton Furnace on here?
See, that Walton Furnace Road 631, down at the very bottom of the second page. It's .7 tenths of a mile. And then they got Walton Furnace 631, one point. It's already in the, it's already in the six-year plan.
Okay, now, what's the Walton Furnace up there, 94B, 4.8 up? What is that? What is that?
What's your, what's your road count on the right of that?
That one goes down to the pumpkin pond?
Let me find it.
Which is, which...
Which page you on, Coy?
The paved part.
All right, two parts of Walton Furnace Road, okay, I see ya. Walton Furnace Road from 94...
That's the upper side.
634 is the upper side. Walton Furnace, 619 up to 630, which is from Austensville Road up to Sanders Mine Road. It's already on the six-year plan.
I know, I know that boy was up here, and I thought we put it on.
Yep, it is on the plan.
Yeah, it's the one point, almost two mile.
Yep.
Stephen, the three that I hear about is, of course, A-Frame, but it's not on there. Dutton Hollow Road, but according to this list, it's on the second page down toward the bottom. It doesn't qualify.
Are there two Dutton Hollow Roads?
No, I don't know.
630...
There is two, but neither one of them qualify. 617, there's one that goes to the Smith County line and one that goes to 683. They're both on the second page.
Hello.
Powder Mills on there, but it's not in the six-year plan. I found, there you go.
Skewon the Springs says that they have 100 vehicles, but there's not a yes or no, so I assume that means they haven't...
Haven't looked at, they could look at that one.
And I don't know that that one qualifies.
Based on...
See, I can't see why, see, that's it.
Right-of-way...
I don't know if it's wide or...
I mean, yeah.
Down to Carter's Spirit. We'll look at traffic count. I never wanted him, they won't have right-of-way problems. I don't know where that is, red blood.
Red bus goes down, church, church, toward Walton.
Okay, see, it has a 20 count.
Gene?
Well, there's a 30 that qualified.
River View?
River View is the one that, down there by the old Ivanhoe Water...
About the Tresland.
I haven't had nobody call me on roads.
Stephen, if you look at traffic count, you know, some of these get down to a 20 count. And that's probably where that Doe Run Road, Doe Road would run. It couldn't be more than that. But some of these roads on here are travel-like. We've done a pretty good job of getting all the higher ones that really are connector roads. But that Zion Church Road showing 160, and I assume that these are current counts. My point is that it looks like, I'd rather we deal with the high-traffic counts instead of these, it's just got 20 cars a day, as far as putting the money right now on them.
Well, will that qualify?
What?
For rural rustic?
Hogback. It's already on it, Zion Church.
It's...
It hasn't been qualified yet. But it's... Ryan, isn't that a pretty good connector road?
Where's that at?
Hogback between Route 11 and getting over to...
Blackly?
Yeah. It's got a lot of traffic on it.
It would be if it was paved.
It's got 170 cars up, down, and it's... I was not looking for that.
Yeah, Hogback's 150, and it's on the secondary six-year plan. Zion Church is .9 miles, it's 160 vehicles.
I question some of these traffic counts. Because Vipperman Lane... There ain't no way 60 vehicles go through Vipperman Lane every day.
Which, which district is Paine Town in it?
Paine Town in mine.
Okay, and that other loop road back there is, that cuts...
That must traffic, you got...
Paine Town?
140.
140 a day?
That's what they say.
And there's just a mile of it, listed.
The last part of Pope Road doesn't qualify, right?
I thought all of Pope Road was already, the rest of Pope Road's on there.
No. It's only to Silas Road. It's only to where the bridge is washed out. And the bridge, from the bridge to the, to the next section of Hardtop is not part of it. But I don't think it qualifies for rural rustic.
Where's the rest of it on, on here?
I don't know if it is.
Pope Road. 643 to 768.
I see the one that's already on the six-year plan, but I don't see any more. That, yeah. That's all, both of them's on the six-year plan. Look up at 642 is a Pope Road. 643 right west to 643 left east. And then 642 Pope Road is on the six-year plan. It's .95. And Pope Road, that's, that's a mile and...
I thought there was about four miles of it, it's not.
And there's a Pope Road up here.
There's another Pope Road on up there.
It's on the six-year plan. Yes, it is.
And you may be right, man. You are.
There's three, three of them on the six-year plan. That's one. That's almost three miles.
There may be all over the team, but I swear I didn't think it was supposed to be.
Guava Lane's a 768, so the...
That's the one that comes from there to bridge.
And goes up there and...
768 to 644. It's Powder Mill Road to Guava Lane.
Well, it's a road along the wrong line, wasn't it?
643 to 643.
That's probably 300.
Yeah, it does say. But it hasn't been qualified, and I don't know that it's 16 feet wide. Since I'm pushing driving, whether it's wide or not.
643 to 643 is Collins Cove Road to Silas Road.
So it's Silas, from Silas to Guava, anywhere on there?
Yep, yep, it is.
Besides them three, Gene, I don't see no more Pope Road on there.
643, 643, 768.
Well, evidently I stand corrected, because like I said, I didn't think all of Pope Road was on there.
643 L to 768. It looks like it is, yeah.
Is it on or no?
Yeah, it's listed on here, it is.
Don't work without a bridge.
Well, then, without the bridge, it makes more sense to pave it always, wouldn't it?
I'll ask him to confirm that and make certain.
Besides, when, Millers Creek, one point, a mile and a half, what other ones you want to add? On the first page, they hide Shadow Lane, Race Track, Pine View, Paine Town.
I think Silent Church, I think that's right, that'd be a good one if it was evaluated and met the...
I mean, we may put them on there, we may put them on there, but, you know, they may come back that they're not, they don't qualify.
Well, that's what he wants, is just a list of ones we want to look at right now for them to...
Go evaluate.
Evaluate, yeah.
I don't know that I've had a lot of calls from Zion Church, but that don't mean that it's going to be. I have, I have had calls from down Mule Hill Road and... Yes, Sheffield Town Road.
All right, these ones up here, it's got the 200 and, 180 count per day. Where's Race Track?
Side to Race Track goes back in the mountain there.
And it's got 190?
Race thing.
They wouldn't have put the counter up there?
Well, the thing about Race Track is if, if they're just going tar and chip it, it ain't going to last.
Well, you ain't been on the board long enough to figure it out, but that's what they do, is they chip and tar it, and then two years later, they'll go back and repay their own.
Yeah, asphalt it.
That's all they can do in rural rustic is tar and chip it.
But that gets it in the system?
Yep.
And then therefore it can get paid.
Becomes a maintenance item.
That Shadow Lane, where's that at?
Lots Gap.
Their 200 count, oh, right at the top of the hill.
Yep.
It comes, it cuts off Lots Gap and comes back around, out on 94?
Uh-uh, it's a dead end.
Dead ends.
It used to come around Die into Field Slade, but I think they do what if it's somewhere on the way?
Oh, Shadow Lane, is that where McPete lives at?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, girl.
Girl.
Farm View, Farm View Road would be a good connector road to connect 21 to Road of Bucks.
That's along with it there.
How many people live on Shadow Lane if there's that many camps?
There's 20, 25 houses out through there.
Well, I'll request that one. That's all I'm requesting.
Stephen, if, if we don't request the six miles, does that just move the others up, or does it mean it goes somewhere else?
That, we need to fully, we need to fully request our allotment. It doesn't help towards anything else. This is money that's in 2020, whatever six years out is, 24.
If you don't request it, it's just gone.
Yeah. And we need to give him about seven or eight miles worth of road right here to look at. To see. So I can take these that you've given so far, so just going down from the top, Millers Creek Road, it's one of them you talked about, and jump in here anywhere.
Raccoon Run, that's got 100, 260 count. How many, how many houses is on that?
Stephen, while you're typing, Brierwood Lane is on here, dead end. Is there another Brierwood Lane that I don't know about? 'Cause I'm almost certain that was paved. Off of West Lee, right before you get to where the old drive-in used to be.
That would be the one that I'm thinking of. Martha, they spell raccoon.
I don't believe it.
260.
Only 35 tenths of a mile.
Well, they're house, they're right beside each other.
Dead End Road? I mean, I'm pretty sure Raccoon Run, if I'm not mistaken, is in my district.
Yeah, Raccoon Run comes off of...
That's why I was asking how many houses were on it. I mean, I like to say it's try to get them served to most people.
Raccoon Run, they want to go up beside the church, companion, that right?
I'm looking here. Yes.
Go rip it, there's a water tank.
Yep, comes off Dungeon Springs Road.
Yeah. We got a water tank at the top of that.
Well, it would make sense, it comes off of Dungeon Springs?
Yeah, because Dungeon Springs hard-surfaced.
Hmm, according to this, no. It's the second one on you live.
Ain't a lot of water issues on Raccoon Run.
Well, we'll have them take a look at it and see if it's eligible.
Oh, do you know where Pine View is, Pine View Drive?
Pine View Drive is, it's on here, it's rural rustic, it qualifies, it's got a 180 count.
Three tenths of a mile, 180 car count.
Yeah.
I'd think that'd be a good candidate if they had any idea where it is.
That's the one off Route 11, going towards rural, or just coming out of Westfield, right past the four lane, where it goes to two lane, turns to the left back up in there. We ran water in there a few years ago when we went out the highway.
I think there's a little trailer park up there.
Trailer Park is, there might be a small one up there, Trailer Park's off of, you're in the right area. Cox's Trailer Park Road comes on... Trailer Park is, there might be a small one up there, Trailer Park's off of, you're in the right area, Cox's Trailer Park Road comes off of there.
So where's another road turn?
So probably where the, where the tower is. The cell tower.
Well, it's approved and it has 180 traffic count and there's only three tenths of a mile.
Yep.
Stephen, you was asking.
That's Charlie's district, I guess.
Because the park that's on here.
Looks like it.
Is .05.
How far does your district go out that, out Route 11?
Which road we talking about?
Pine View.
Well, it's in Charlie's district now, isn't it?
No, I think it's in mine. Mine goes up to Red Creek.
I don't think there's no unpaid roads in the west and east.
It's in Blackwood.
I was gonna say, not much of this conversation.
Blackwood District.
Well, the two you got.
I've got Crockett's Cove.
I think, I think Ryan's. You know Smith Hollow? What they're calling Cove Road on here.
Ground road.
Is that?
Crockett's Cove?
Yeah, what they're talking about is that.
Do what?
Two tracks, two aside that goes off into Little Creek.
Come to Red Creek.
You don't wanna go there, nobody lives there.
I've been there.
Once you leave Little Creek, everything's south and west.
It's a good, it's a good vibe taking a fall. You go really, really slow.
Smith Hollow too, too bad.
You should see the trash off that road.
Off Smith Hollow?
Off the.
Crockett's Cove.
Not Crockett's Cove, the one that goes to Little Creek.
You do have more.
No. I can't think of what it's called.
Look at the map, it's jeans, everybody else is.
Well, the two that go over the mountain are Smith Hollow. And the other one is the extension of Crockett's Cove.
Is it the same, Crockett's Cove Road, it says here Blaine County Line.
That's where Coke turns into do that two-track road that goes through the National Park. It's not really a road, it's just two tracks.
Yeah, that's, I mean, I know it ain't gonna qualify, but where's, where's the other end of Crockett's Cove Road at?
It's all paved.
It's all hard.
It's all of it's paved?
Yeah, the, the pavement ends right past the King's.
And that's where the road forks and that other one's a Forest Service Road.
I've never been past that.
Or you don't want to unless you got a poor route out.
Gene, what's your word on Zion Church? Put it on there for consideration or not? Green Mountain Road, I don't know if they can do anything there because that comes off Dutton Hollow.
That's Dutton Hollow, and Dutton Hollow says don't, I assume it does qualify because it's not wide enough.
Green Mountain also comes all around the Campbell down there, doesn't it?
Zion Church would be, Zion Church would probably make a decent connector road because it would connect to Sharon's Drive, so.
That's St. Luke's.
That's what I was saying.
Well, I think, Gene, that tee, that Ward Branch going to the left and Zion's going to the right. If you come across Sharon's Drive, you come to that tee over there.
When you come down to the bottom of the hill, Sharon, on Sharon Drive? Etter. No, Old King turns to the left and Zion Church turns to the right.
But that's, that's 2.1 mile.
When you, when you go down there just a little ways, Zion Church turns left and if you keep going straight, you're on Ward Branch.
Does Zion Church one, it's real curvy?
It's got some curves in it.
Does it qualify, is it wide enough?
It not say it is on here.
Say it is or isn't. Might off of 21.
Yeah, off 21 side, probably.
This end comes out on Ward Branch?
No, the eastern end comes out on 21. Right there with the green boxes you said.
Did you ever find out how many houses on Raccoon Run?
Etter Road goes down there.
There are a few houses up in there.
The road continues, but it changes from Etter to Old King.
More than what I thought it was gonna be.
And it goes up to Hookaway?
Oh, yeah, sort of.
I really thought Pine View.
You're down there to take a left and you go back into Hookaway.
I was thinking Pine View was also.
You just thinking it was what?
Paved. I know Briarwood is.
Zion Church would definitely be nice, especially that first part of it, where it's up at the steep.
Raccoon's probably got more houses on it than Shadow Lane does. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20.
Well, snake will go over Dr. Milford's.
Probably 25, 30.
On three tenths of a mile?
Three tenths of a mile doesn't look right to me is what's though me.
Well, I think we need to put that, if there's that many people, it would serve 30 houses.
What road is that, Raccoon?
Raccoon Run.
Alright, we'll have him look at it. Well, that should give us enough mileage, if anybody's got anything else, send me an email and we'll, we'll put that in.
Before we get into.
You think we can get the Pain Hill Road on there just so they'll tar it?
Well, we'll keep after him, Coy, every time he comes, we'll tell him to pave it, it's in bad shape. Before we get into the budget, we postponed this from the, our previous meeting because Ryan wasn't here and Gene wasn't here. We've heard from both of the attorney groups, I don't think we need to hear from any more. And. I'm opening the floor for a motion and if we get a second, then we'll go into discussion. On any one of them. Cause we done, already made the decision that we want to go ahead and join the lawsuit.
You want the motion?
Motion from, for one of them.
Well, I motion, make a motion that we hire a local firm of. Campbell and.
What is it?
It's actually Wagstaff and Cartmail.
Wagstaff and Cartmail. Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, floor up for discussion.
Just make sure they got their email. I don't think they were here when we.
Oh, yeah, they emailed, they have lowered their. Down to 25 percent, just like, just like the other group. And Jeff called me this morning, he's wanting to get to Kyle Coy. He was on his way back to Richmond and I asked him to send that, but he must not got it sent, the new contract with that in it, but.
They did.
Didn't they?
Um, I just didn't know if they, the ones that weren't here when we discussed it, I didn't know if they. Were aware of it.
Okay.
I read the email, but. I didn't read the contract verbatim, I mean, I'll tell you that right.
Why not, well.
It was boring enough sitting on bus.
Not that boring.
No.
But any more discussion, any questions?
I did not seem to get that email, if it went to spam, if one of y'all would forward that to me, I appreciate it.
I probably.
Thank you.
Okay.
Let me have a little bit say. I. I said this over pretty good. I like the. First, I like the old man. I didn't care for the judge, whatever he's supposed to be. And he said some things there, it kind of reminded me of. The one we heard from the county administrator. So there's no way that I have no vote from him.
Okay. Anybody else got any comments or questions or anything else before we vote?
Well, I, I like the, I like the local connection. You know. I think they live in the area and they know the epidemic and the problems we've dealt with. I think that if it ends up going to the jury trial, I think they can. Better represent the county and the problems we've had with it, so.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Hear none, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Valt?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye, motion faces 7-0. I guess Stephen, if you'll inform Scott and. And we'll enter, get, negotiate the contract and get it all.
We'll do so.
Okay, now the floor is yours, Mr. Valt.
Alright, I've talked to most of you all throughout the, since our last meeting, just going over some of these items. Basically, there were a couple of items outstanding of, of where we stood. There is in front of you a sheet of paper, Mr. Valt had requested a breakdown showing for the budgets, what's local funds, what's state funds, what's other funds? Out through there, so there's a breakdown of that going across through there. Guess before we get started, is there anybody that has any conflict of interest statements they want to read or anything before we get going?
What else do you want to say, do we need to read all them things?
I'll start. I will tell you that as of 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock this morning, I don't remember the exact time, but I'm no longer a school resource officer, I've been transferred to Investigations Division. When I put in for it. And I figured the first of them up that a decision be made, I contacted Mr. Fording yesterday and he said. Since the conflict had to do with my position, that if I did get the position, that I would be able to participate in the SRO slash SSO discussion. In his opinion. I do have a letter, if anybody wants to see it, if you don't believe me. Anyway, I Brian Valt as a member of the With County Board of Supervisors declare pursuant to the Virginia Conflict of Interest Act that regarding the matter of With County budget involving the With County Sheriff's Office. And the With County School Board, I have a personal interest because I am a full-time employee of the With County Sheriff's Office and my wife is a full-time employee of the With County Public School System. Which will be affected by matters. Which will be affected by the budget discussions to be discussed in our meeting today and I declare that I'm able to participate in this matter fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Okay, I Ryan Lawson is a member of the With County Board of Supervisors declare pursuant to the Virginia Conflict of Interest Act that regarding this matter of budget discussions involving the With County Sheriff's Office. I have a personal interest because my husband is a full-time employee of the With County Sheriff's Office, which will be affected by the budget discussions to be discussed in our meeting this evening. And I declare that I'm able to participate in this matter fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
I voluntarily declare this, do I have to leave and I go home? I Gene Horn is a member of the With County Board of Supervisors declare pursuant to the Virginia Conflict of Interest Act that regarding the matters of budget discussions involving the With County School Board. I have a personal interest because I am a part-time employee of the With County School Board and my wife is a full-time employee. Which will be affected by the matters discussed in budget. At our meeting today and I declare that I am able to participate in this matter fairly, objectively, and in, and in the public interest. And objectively in the public interest, sorry, can't read that.
Okay, even though my wife hasn't worked for four days and hadn't come anywhere near the amount, but I, I Tim Reeves, as a member of the, of the With County Board of Supervisors.
Declare present to Virginia Code Conflict of Interest Act that have a personal interest because my wife is a part-time employee of the With County School Board, which will be affected by the matters. Budget discussions or whatever to discuss in our meeting today request and I declare that I am, I am able to participate in this matter fairly, objectively, and in public interest.
Okay.
Alright, we'll follow that out of the way, thank you everyone, we'll get into it. Basically, from the last meeting and from the discussion, there were. Two primary issues that were outstanding that, that I felt had not been resolved, those being final numbers on school resource officers, school security officers. And then discussion on the capital improvement budget. But I'll first open the floor to you all and see if there are any other items or any items that anybody else has, they were wanting to get some comments on or clarifications on before we went any further. Mr. Valt did ask about some information on the library and I do have, and I'd recommend maybe Brian, if you and I can sit and look at that at some point in time and then maybe we'll see if we need to have our committees look at that and see. But I've got a breakdown showing what's Grayson County, what's With County and all of that, but I think it's not as much directly on our, our funding issue right now, if that's alright with you.
Have we heard anything from either the school board or finance, what kind of carryover each is gonna have?
School board, I have not heard anything on carryover. On the county, we have been, been looking through the numbers and, and there obviously will be some carryover items, there is some things that we know we didn't. Put in this year that will help with the, with the amount that goes that we'll be pulling out of the general fund next year. But I do not have a solid figure on that at this time, and Valt until probably mid-June.
Well, and we don't know what the state's gonna do.
Correct.
So without knowing what our revenue is, how can we vote on this and come to a conclusion? On what we're gonna spend if we don't know what we've got and what we're gonna get?
The, well, as, as the Senator told me today, as he was talking about it, he said everybody's putting in the lowest number from the estimates and if the state numbers come in better than that, that's where they are. The school board has the governor's estimate in their budget. The House budget that was presented was more favorable for education, the Senate budget was less favorable of education. But obviously, in, in talking to one of our senators just an hour ago. He does not think it'll be a short timeframe on this and we're gonna have to go with, with our best estimates off the numbers we have and we know that they're subject to change. But as with all budgets, that's, that's what you've got, your revenues or, or your best estimates that you have.
Mr. Chairman, let me see a little. I got a call after their last meeting there. I guess evidently I took some of them off the Burn Springs Fire Department when I said that they'd have to ride that truck up Wyzer Highway. And God knows, I don't want to make nobody mad at me, but I just, this whole truck. And the fire chief said if you want to know anything about the truck, just give him a call. If he can tell you anything that you needed to know or wanted to know. And I had relayed the message.
So they still want the $750,000 truck?
I think they probably settle for a lot less as long as it's what they need and what they say they need. I'm not a firefighter, I couldn't do a jam the truck, you know? I'm not a firefighter, I couldn't do a jam in the truck, you know? I don't know if that's a fire. I think more or less they probably be satisfied with something decent that would be beneficial to them.
How many fire trucks do they have, anyway? I mean, the buildings, I know that all the buildings are full, but what else have they got down our besides? I can't remember that truck.
That's probably inventory, but if I remember correctly, they are planning to sell two of the trucks. They will get rid of two.
Because one's 30 years old?
One of them's in pretty rough shape because I was down there, probably June of last year, and I went out and looked at it. I mean, it's, it's got some issues.
He said it's unsafe and he don't want to put his wobbly hair in it to drive it.
So, yeah, they're- They want a rescue pumper? Is that what they're wanting?
Max Meadows, Scott. I think, I think looking at, I think looking at their needs is their want to combine two trucks into one. The problem is, and Gene, I, they really don't make a small rescue pump.
Probably not.
Because you've got to have the hydraulic capability to operate the rescue tools. You've got to have a decent sized water tank, especially in a rural area. And then you've got the pump.
That's your problem is, I mean, your water tank, especially if you're carrying a water tank plus your hose, then, I mean, you've got to have storage for all your other stuff. That's-
Yeah, they won't have an extra crash truck.
That's the rescue part of it, is the hydraulics. And I, you know, I just don't-
Believe it or not, they can make a hydraulic pump. I mean, it can be pretty small. I mean, shoot, they make, they make rescue, rescue tools now that are battery powered. I mean-
And Josh has sent information in of another truck that is under $600,000 and that's rough numbers right now. But that was a, I want to say Spartan?
Have we looked at the truck? I mean, I ain't, I ain't in great favor of it, but have we looked at used stuff? I mean, sometimes you can buy good used fire trucks. I mean, yeah, sometimes you can buy used fire trucks that are, they don't need to be-
They haven't been around.
I, I think the problem with used is it's such a specialty vehicle. Because I kind of looked, you know, just because I was curious. It's such a specialty vehicle that combines two trucks into one when people get their hands on them. They usually have them built to their specs and they don't get rid, I mean, you've seen what they cost. They don't get rid of them until they're-
30 years old.
They had a, they had a picture of them. I think it was a 2008 and it was something like $350,000.
Or just pictures of them?
No. It's, to me, it looks just like the truck that Max Meadows got. I'd like to say, I don't-
I mean, how, how many miles on it and what's wrong with it?
I don't, what, what, what many miles, though?
I guess the discussion on that, I'll just, I'll hand the numbers out. This is what I handed out before, so neither of us, this is recommended before, just so you know. That's 778 was what Bearin' Springs was talking about. 538 was what Max Meadows was talking about. The question is, do you want to put $500,000, a million dollars, a million and a half dollars in the budget and debt service for it and taxes to pay for it?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
We're supposed to be the elected adults here and look at what we've got. I think Mr. Vaughn can tell you that Max Meadows' truck can't go to most rural fires. It's ineffectual once you get off the pavement. There's too much truck, a whole lot of Max Meadows District. They can't even get the truck there. And why would you buy one and put it at Bearin' Springs? Now, they're going to tell you, well, we've only had five fires in the last three years that we couldn't get to. But if you get inside of the fire, that don't count getting there with that big truck. And I know cases where they couldn't even get that truck to the fire. We've got that hodgepodge of residences up on top of that ridge. And Coy's a truck man, Tim's drove a truck, Gene's drove a truck. You go up that hill on Smith Lane and it'll tear the axles out of it or ring and drive shaft off. It's just too much truck for rural fires. They're great for a city fire department. It did a good job at the, regrettably, at the Discount Mall. But both of these requests are out of order of what they need to fight fire. I've got threatening calls from Max Meadows members, which threaten to sue the county and that they can't do their job because we won't buy them what they want. And it's not our job to buy them what they want. It's our job to buy them what's right for the job. And that tanker that they say is unsafe, they don't report that equipment on, to every time, do they? Every time they get a call, that tanker rolls. If it's something safe, why do you take it every time? The tractor fire when the county bush-holed, is a good example. Three different trucks showed up for a tractor fire and one of them was that tanker that's not safe to drive. So if we just throw money at it because they want one, we're not acting like adults. I can't believe that, I believe in the tanker test force because we've got so many areas of county that do not have hydrants. Was it really needed out at Discount Mall? You had two hydrants and thankfully, or unsightly, they were both working. Did you need the tanker there? Did they call a tanker test force? I don't know. But we've got plenty of water out there, haven't we?
Had plenty of water and I understand they did run tanker trucks running to, and I can't remember if it was the aerial truck or whatever, but they had, they had trucks running to it also. So they, they had, they had a, they were running out of a hydrant somewhere or another because our water department was working with them, trying to find the best hydrant that wouldn't be pulling off the same line that the trucks up there were fighting the fire off of.
Yep. Well, the point's the same. If you don't get equipment to work for the area and just throw money at it because it's a big expensive truck, I, I just don't understand that logic that we would even consider over a million dollars for two trucks. I don't care how many they retire. It's what you do with the new money that we got to borrow and do debt service for. They need truck probably at Bearin' Springs. I don't know how many first line trucks they got. I know the last time Tim and I were down there, they didn't have place to put anything else. Everything in, every firehouse, that firehouse was full.
Yeah, but they got their old trucks and, that old truck thing on campus.
Because it's looking at putting an ambulance down there and they would, we'd have to build a building and put ambulance down there.
I don't know what's, what you need.
If they didn't get a rescue pumper, but they got a new pumper and a new crash truck, what would that cost? What did they all retreat by last year? Was it just a straight pumper?
Yeah. It was a straight pumper and it was, what did I say, 300? 385?
Was it a pumper, tanker, carried some water?
Well, all pumpers carry some water.
Yeah, I mean-
I mean, they do, they do make them that don't carry water, but nobody around here-
Around here's got it.
Don't carry at least some water.
A rescue truck? I don't know, it's been slow. It's been slow since, because I was still a fire department when we retreated off there. I don't know. Gene, you got any?
I don't, I don't know. I mean, I know Spiegel bought a rescue truck, but they bought them a used one. The used one, Bearin', the one Bearin' Springs test, they got used over 10 years ago.
And my only other comment is just also keep in mind, we did talk at the last meeting about, we are applying for rural development money for air packs and we are, they are planning on applying to foundation for air packs. But that total cost down in that meeting that the committee was at was over $400,000.
And if we don't get the grants, you know, I'd rather pull the money out of reserves to buy the air packs than I had to buy a truck.
I would too.
I mean, it, so I-
That's difference in wants and needs.
Where we are right now, if we just want to lead, if you don't want to put any capital permits for the trucks in there right now and that's, that's what-
We can look at it in the upcoming year if something changes, we can, we can revisit it.
And then we see what happens with the air pack grants, so.
Well, would you go ahead and put that money in the budget for the air packs? And if you don't need it, you're going to need some of it if you get both grants.
We, we can put it in there and show it.
Would that mean everybody's approval to put it in for the air packs? I don't know how all the air packs went bad at one time. That sounds like poor planning.
I can see exactly how that-
Because we got grants and we bought all new ones at the same time.
Because they used to hand them grants out like candy.
Yeah.
And now they're expired and there's no grant money for them.
How long have they been last? 20 years?
Now, Spiegel just, just did something with their, they got bottles, but did, upgraded bottles, but didn't upgrade their, their mask and everything. Right. I was going to say, we just upgraded our cylinders, so I mean, yeah.
Well, Stephen, are we going to demand standardization?
I mean, we're going to be pushing standardization, but all the departments have indicated standardization. The only thing that didn't work was Spiegel came up with a solution last year, short term, and that was to update their bottles as opposed, and I don't remember the cost of it, I want to say $30,000 or $40,000 or something like that, instead of doing the whole cost for the whole air upgrade packs because, you know, that, that kept them in service.
Well, what they told us, the mechanism is outdated. It's got an expiration date on it. But everybody in the fire department knew that day was coming.
Well, for three years, we've been applying for, or we and they have been applying for grants for the air packs. Just, they have not been awarded. It's, whatever has changed from, from 20 years ago or 30 years ago. And now, that's, that's been the main thing. So put $400,000 in the budget then for capital expenditures for fire rescue or fire departments and we'll see where they come out on the air pack grants. Does that work?
I think so. Because if, if we don't use it for air packs, then we could always go back and look at trucks. Yeah, if we had to. I mean, $400,000 wouldn't buy a whole truck, but I mean, it would pay a lot of debt service.
All right. Is that where I want to go with that? All right. We'll advertise that. While we're on the capital expenditure one there, the only other one that we had discussion on was talking about the Apex improvements and what we put in there on it. The total there is currently $721,000. As I said, this current year on what we have out there in the Apex budget and approved so far, we have that $500 and some thousand dollars remaining. We know we're going to spend 125, 150 possibly on the road through there. The phone system, RFP, sound system, RFP, has gone out. The phone system, RFP, will be going out this week. I don't, the phone system will not be a huge expense on it. The sound system is one that, that could be an expense. So there is potential for some carryover funds there, just depending on what we come across in the final construction phases, is right there that, that could carry over.
And we're applying for $750,000 from the Tobacco Commission, which $500,000 that could go towards this. But we won't know that until the fall. And some of the exterior lightning stuff is, the electric builders guy comes through with the-
Yeah. I mean, that can be done for a whole lot less than what's shown here. These were just some numbers from engineering, using means and all of that and area that was covered. But, you know, two or three of those light poles and those lights on it. And Mr. Hale, I don't know if you've got an estimate on, you know, cost of doing that, but that's a whole lot cheaper than running a lot of poles and a lot of lights and a lot of lines to the whole, to the whole area.
Well, anybody south after dark, they look and see what that one does down there.
Yeah.
In the flying J lot, the one that you think it's the southern cross star when you're coming up interstate. If you put one of them in each one of the parking lots, your only cost is underground cable and ditch to it.
Yeah.
And, and you've lit the whole parking lot adequately. Yeah. The maintenance, obviously, would be ours. And if those he's got can be fitted with LED lights to cut the light bill, because those things will spin your meter, that would be an upgrade on whatever he gives us. Let me ask you a question about the RV. Gene brought that up. That's a revenue source, a major revenue source. I don't agree with Mr. Vaughn's estimate, but I do have two technical questions. If we meter that off of the main line up there and keep it out of the building, if we put a drop up there from AEP, we meter those two costs. If it goes into that building and comes back out, we can't meter the cost and know exactly how much money you're making every year. And if they're priced too cheap, if you got the numbers, you tell Apex people, raise your prices, you're not making money. But some places, now, big, big places, obviously, they charge over $100 a night for those people that have got stock there or if there's a big show. And unless you know what your cost is, you don't have any idea what your revenue ought to be. And I think if we feed it off of those means with a meter, if we're taking it into the building, it gets confused totally with the operating cost, which it's not really part of.
Yeah. I mean, my whole thing is, do we want to put it in the budget this year or not put it in the budget? I, I think, I think there's ideas, yes, Joe, of running it off of another meter or separate meter.
Well, I think it should be.
Well, and, and my question, I didn't get answered, is who gets the revenue off of that?
The authority, the Apex authority would be the one leasing that out, renting those spaces out.
Because they-
Well, I don't, I don't think the county needs to be building RV lots competing against private business so the Apex authority can make rip.
There, there isn't any private business that's not overwhelmed. There's a job going on right now. What's the name of the one that's turning people away?
Now, the gentleman down there on Good Sam?
Little.
Yeah.
The other one, same way. The two new ones that's been built are already built. And it's hard to build an RV park now. Smart people built them 50 years ago when they weren't so regulated. But there's no room right now in RV parks.
Well, if we build RV lots, then the revenue needs to come back to the can.
No, it goes to pay the debt service. No, it goes to pay the debt service.
That's what I just said, debt service.
Well, we didn't answer your question right then. Stephen, did we misspeak or was that intentional?
Well, I, I don't know how it is. I'll say, basically, the numbers that, the operational numbers that the authority has been looking at, has been looking at, including in SMG's numbers, revenue from the RV lots as a source of revenue for them.
But let's not have answered his question.
Well, it, it, that means.
This is a, this is a simple answer. Everything over what cost, over what cost to run the facility will go towards the debt service. That's, that's simple. If there's anything left over, and, well, it will be after when it gets going, but the first year, the second year, or the third year, anything that's left over from operations will go towards the debt service and paying back the, the land and the building and everything else that's down there.
So, right now, technically, it doesn't go back toward it until we're, until we're there, right?
Yes, it does. It goes into the pot. That Mr. Dalton threw out the number and the paper picked up on it. It's three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Wasn't that the money he said had to make a month?
A, a year.
A year. All the money, the, the, the authority is not some remote group that can take money and hide it, or take money and build other things. They can't build anything down there without the county's approval by contract. Isn't that right, Stephen?
Well, currently, right now, they don't even have the lease on it, but yes, that's what the lease says, yes.
The county has gotta keep their hands on the money. You can't just let appointed people have the control of that money, and that was never the intent. They're an operating function, and they're an operator only. The property belongs to the county, the buildings, if, if they want to build a barn, which that fine facility down there is not a barn, but if they wanna build a stable, I guess that's the more correct word, that cannot be built without this board approving it. Although it's in the master plan, they can't just come down there with a new plan and start throwing up buildings. Is that correct or not?
Correct.
So, it's not some harem of scaring that we've got a group out there that's running loose. They're under total control of the board by contract.
I understand that. I guess what my concern is, if, I feel like personally, and I don't know if this is an area we can drop or shave down some, but I feel like if we don't shave down a little bit what's going toward the Apex, that everyone in the county is going to blame a tax increase on the Apex, since we have so much allotted for it. Which, which is what I see. So, I don't know if that's an area, or if we can look at a different area within that.
Well, you've got to have funds to open it with. You, we, we knew this when we, the six of us voted to start this a couple of years ago, that the first two or three years, that the county was going to put money towards this. And it's, that's just the reality of it. Now, other things has come up. We haven't slacked on the school renovation, which we've done ten million. We're looking at doing the whole fifteen million. And, and that's gonna raise, raise the debt service, and it, it has in the past because of school construction. But we still do it.
Right, and I understand that. You know, for me, it's a catch twenty-two, because I want, I want it to open and I want it to be successful. So, that's why I voted yes for the smoke and the fire and all that stuff last time, but I still feel like we could shake it on somewhere, but I guess that's just me.
I mean, I'd feel better if we can get it open. You know, the exterior lighting, we need exterior lighting. I don't know that we have to have paved parking lots to get it open.
There's not gonna be any paved parking lots except the handicapped lot, as it has to be.
So, the three hundred thousand dollars is not, that's just to gravel the lot?
The three hundred thousand was looking at fully graveling the lots. The half price of that, a hundred and seventy-five, one fifty, whatever you're gonna put in there, was to look at graveling exteriors around them and maybe some passageways through them, but the rest of it remaining as grass lots.
What's the internal road?
Internal roads has to be built, and that is the road going from the end of the Apex Center right now. RGM's contract only builds the road to there. We still need to have the gravel road from there all the way down the hill to the parking area, and then all the way back around to the multipurpose field parking area there. That's what that is.
Well, and I mean, those two are half-packs. The RV lots, my opinion is, let's get it open, see if it takes off, and we can look at RV lots later.
Well, now, the RV lot is not a new lot, with money in mind. The RV lot is gonna be built off of that upper parking lot that's already graded. Stephen goes with the engineer's estimate. And I'd be happy to resign from the board and take that contract for two hundred thousand dollars and lap all the way to the bank.
Well, Mr. Hale, if that's the case, and you wanna change it to a hundred thousand dollars, now's the time to do it.
Yeah.
I mean, that's.
Well.
And that's kinda what I was saying, if we could.
If we build it with some common sense, and I'm saying that as an engineering point, Bill is a good engineer, but he designs the federal Department of Energy standards. And we don't do aircraft carriers and we don't build airfields. But you got one ditch to dig. It is a fifty amp disconnect at each site. And just compare this thing, just, just for a minute. Would any of these people be building new campsites where they already had sewer and water and electric on site if it cost two hundred thousand dollars to build twenty-seven sites? The numbers don't work.
What should it cost? What can we put it as?
Well, you do the math. Was it twenty-seven sites that he had, or like twenty-nine lined out?
I don't remember the number of sites he could get in there.
Well, I think if it's twenty-seven or twenty-nine into two hundred thousand dollars is, what, ten dollars, ten thousand dollars a site?
Thirty sites into two hundred thousand would be fifteen thousand a site.
Yep, and it will not cost that. I just.
That's fine. I, I, I mean, these are just numbers and, and that, that Mr. Vaughn has provided based on running those things, and that's what I'm saying. We just added four hundred thousand dollars in additional money that's coming out of the general fund when we added four hundred thousand for the fire department. So, we're now up to one point nine million dollars that we're showing coming out of reserve funds right now. If we don't need seven hundred thousand dollars on here, then change it to six hundred thousand dollars, or change it to five hundred thousand dollars, whatever you think we need to get all those things done, and we'll advertise the budget that way.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
That's, that's what I'm trying to get to.
Shave two hundred thousand dollars off of that down to five hundred thousand for all that work. And we can get it done for that. Coy does this kind of work, and he's sitting here not commenting. But you would take that job in a heartbeat. The, the way we, the way we confuse us is if we overstate the cost and then get it done cheaper, it's still gotta be in this budget for safety.
And that's what everyone sees when they see a tax increase.
Yep.
I just think if we don't, if we can at least say that we worked on it and we got it done as close as we could.
Well, we've worked on it for three years.
My recommendation a month ago was to take it to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, just because I felt like we had to get parking lots done and we had to get some of those things done, and seven hundred thousand dollars was too much to take to the public right now.
Can we get it done for three fifty?
Yep.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's what I'm saying, whatever number you all want.
Three fifty, we're dealing with it.
I should put it three fifty. I mean, for budget purposes, let's do it.
All right, that takes care of all the items that we have had for, primarily for discussion on capital projects, unless any of these, anybody wants to discuss any further.
Yeah, let's talk about school for a minute.
Okay.
How much they asked for it to be added to their operating funds?
They requested three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars or three hundred and forty-six thousand dollars more. And the recommendation from the board at this point in time was to flat fund them, so we have them left at thirteen million, one hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, when, when you told us refinancing would cut a hundred and seventy-five thousand out of the debt service.
Correct.
That was for everything. Now, we're looking at paying for the money we authorized last year. Is that right?
Yeah, the debt services, and it will be in this year.
We didn't put it in last year.
No, we did not put the debt service in.
So, we're really looking at paying for fifteen million plus.
The eight hundred and thousand dollars that I have included in the debt service is basically taking the six hundred, and I don't remember the figure off the top of my head, Joe, but I'll say six hundred and fifty thousand we agreed to last year, and taking off a hundred and seventy-five thousand that we intend to save on doing the refinancing, plus borrowing an additional five million costs us three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, you're back up a hundred and seventy-five thousand on top of it. So, that's where that eight hundred thousand dollars in debt service is coming from, is from the additional, from, from fully paying for fifteen million. But in essence, two and a half million of that, we've saved on the debt service from the refinancing.
Okay, all right.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
And here's what I wish, I'll have to go ahead and take a heartbeat. Let's tell them we'll meet them halfway on the debt service for the next five million. If they wanna do that, which you know I don't think that's a real number, 'cause we don't know what we're getting for it. We know we're overpaying for a mechanical system, or one of us knows that, because it's what they want. Y'all were all out there when I tried to talk to them about using fixed windows and saving a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand dollars. We don't do that in West County. I happened to be by Sheffy today. We did a good job at Sheffy. Everybody's happy. I went by there. We paid for a true mechanical system, and half the windows were open. Unless I know that that mechanical system is shut down, we were wasting money, and we wasted money when we put those operable windows in there. Do you get my point? It's like if you're running your air conditioning, or you run your heat in the morning, and then at ten o'clock, open the windows. Fixed windows on that high school would save a lot of money, and it was just blown sight, didn't pay any attention to it at all. So, I'd say, let's think it, say, okay, we'll do the five million. Y'all come up with flat funding with half of the debt service out of your funds. We have handed them a chunk of money unrestricted, and there's no management. I'm not against teachers. I wish they made twice what they make 'cause they earned it. But there's money to be saved in that school board budget. This is my narrow opinion. We take them a pot of money and hand it to them, and we don't know what happens to it, where it goes. As long as you do that, it's just gonna be like a teenage kid. The hand's always gonna be out wanting more. I, I never had a allowance when I was growing up, but allowance is never enough. And that's what this is. We just hand them money, and every year they ask for more. Not just for capital projects. Stephen, you've been here seventeen years?
Yes, sir.
When have they never asked for more operating money?
I do not know the answer to that, Mr. Hale.
Well, every time they've asked for a legitimate, we've come through for them, right? Every time that the state pulled a swift move and said, you gotta pay back pay into your retirement, board supervisors made the money available. When they didn't get their teachers' raises, we made the money available. And two years ago, I said, this snowball has got to stop. It'll get to the point you can't pay it anymore. And some counties have done that. They just spent, 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 and the snowball got too big. And if you don't have some fiscal restraint, it will never end on the taxpayers. And the real estate tax and personal property tax is the burden that hurts the taxpayers. And that's where all this money comes from. So, that's all I've got to say.
Stephen, what's the half, half of debt service on five million? Is that, that's what you said, right?
Mm-hmm. We get it through that.
About a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
And out of their budget, you can find that before ten o'clock.
Well, and it goes back to what I, I don't think it's fair during budget time to cut them. You know, I'll go back to what I said last meeting, is I think we need to start having joint meetings, and we can bring up concerns. Have you seen the thing at Sheffy with the windows? Did you call anybody?
Nope. Why would I?
Cause we're the funding board. If it's wasted money, we don't wanna give my opinion when I think.
Well, but it does, if we have no authority under the way we do it to question how they spend their money. Smith County, Smith County does.
Well, I, I understand what you're saying, but if we have joint meetings and we bring these issues up and the issues aren't created, then we cut their budget.
I, I see your point, but it's never gonna happen.
If they want money, it'll happen.
It's my opinion. Mr. Turner, I'm gonna leave so you can talk about me.
Well, what else we got, Stephen, to talk about?
The last item is the school resource officers, and I just wanna make certain, we, we talked four and seven. Mr. Hale talked last time. When I say four and seven, we talked about four school resource officers and seven, or eight schools being covered with school security officers.
Is that eight schools with school security?
Yeah, we, y'all talked six, seven, and, and eight in that whole process. Seven would be covering everything in the process.
That seven would be fourteen officers, correct?
Seven would be fourteen officers, yes.
So, how many, the two hundred and twelve thousand, how many SSOs is that?
That was for the seven schools.
Fourteen.
So, fourteen.
Prince William County has implemented their program, haven't they?
I know they were looking at it.
I talked to Corey Stewart, now that, in Mr. Farthing's words, I'm back in the ballgame. I talked to Corey Stewart the other Saturday or Sunday. There is no armed SSO program in Virginia. What they're proposing in Prince William, which has four hundred and fifty thousand residents, is gonna be the first program in Virginia. And I talked to Mr. Stewart, and I said, you know, I said, how are y'all gonna do this? And he said, we have plenty of retired police officers. He said, some months, we have fifteen, twenty retired. He said, they stay out thirty days, they come right back. West County doesn't have that. And I went to a training in Portsmouth a couple of months ago, and the code of Virginia opens this up. They don't have to be retired from West County. And I sat there, and the first speaker we had was talking about mental health. He was retired from New Jersey. He had been committed five times and kept his job because up north. and kept his job because of North, their union. Had been committed to a mental facility five times, and kept his badge and his gun. Now, if we have somebody like that that moves down here, and the school board calls and says, we need to do a reference, you know what they're gonna get? He started work this day, he ended work this day. And, you know, Mr. Hale likes to talk about being an expert. This is the Virginia Training Guide for School Resource Officers and School Safety Officers, that was revised in 2017. The second page has got my name because I was on the governor's task force to rewrite it. So, I actually wrote the book. I think we need to have a meeting with the sheriff. Like Mr. McCrobbin says, we need to give little, and he needs to give little.
Yeah, we need to, we're beating a dead horse, we need to get down to the bottom of it. And without the sheriff here for us, I'll ask questions, and come to some type of an agreement. I don't know that we, we won't. Because I've looked at the numbers 20 different ways, but...
Now, I'm gonna look at the numbers. I mean, I'm interested in school safety. And I agree, what we're trying here is a new thing. And the code has allowed a new thing for the school security officers. I've asked around surrounding counties what they're looking at, and a lot of them not gotten a request to add them to the elementary schools. Obviously, you know, our school board has indicated a request to add them to, to the, to that. Once again, the same discussion with that expo center. Not to, you know, to put a general budget out there of where we're going to go. I mean, the sheriff had even said in a meeting, at the school board office, if he were to put 13 school resource officers in the schools, it would take him two years to get ramped up to do that. We've got to find the officers, you've got to train the officers, we've got to go through all of that in the process. School system is going to have the same thing with school security officers. Even if we gave them $200,000 for the school security officers right now, for the number of schools, whatever, it's gonna take a while to get ramped up, and not even guaranteed they're gonna have enough people to do all of them. And they, but at least they would have an opportunity to maybe move people between some of the schools. And, and it would keep four school resource officers, I have one to what we've got right now. It would keep three deputies employed, because basically, the sheriff has said, they're not gonna be employed. So, we have currently three school resource officers in full-time jobs, that I guess their jobs will be ending unless we are agreeing to pick up some sort of funding for that. It adds one additional funding. So, you know, the numbers-wise, we looked at it anyway, and I ran, just, I mean, and obviously, one of the main things it comes down to, is the cost, and it's up, you know, for decision purposes. Primarily, when you throw all the benefits into it, that is the biggest factor that, that makes a difference in it. You're looking at about $49,000 for salary and benefits for one position, versus $25,000 for salary and benefits for the school security officer. And the primary reason of that is, you're not paying $7,500 a year for health insurance, you're not paying for the VRS, you're not paying for several of those items that go in there, the hazard duty and all of that, that all adds up. Every one of these, you gotta buy a weapon for, every one of these, you've gotta buy uniforms for. And this doesn't include, and recurring cost deal with uniform allotments and things like that. This is not addressing vehicles. If we go to new SROs, you are looking to be, this is strictly looking at an individual's cost for, for doing that.
The school security officer, that one, one school, that's two officers, correct?
That is, that's 185 days, eight hours a day, $15 an hour. Whether that's split, one person doing that the entire time, or split between two people, that, that's what it's looking at, but it's a part-time position.
And I think something else we're missing on this is, when we talk about part-time, is, you know, what we've seen in Ruritrite, that was all over the news, is the ability for that officer to build a relationship with those children. You know, I basically look at the armed SSO as a hired gun. And there's a reason that, you know, Prince William's looking at that in the elementary schools, because you don't have the criminal element, you don't have the crime. Now, last meeting, Mr. Hale said, talked about having, you know, one SRO to ride around and arrest people that the SSO detained. Law enforcement don't work like that. You know, disturbances, for the most part, are misdemeanors. We can't arrest people on a misdemeanor unless it happens in our presence. And anything SSO gets involved in criminally that goes to court, they're gonna get subpoenaed too.
Well, that's why I like the four SROs to cover the high school and the middle schools, and SSOs will be at the elementary schools.
And I understand there's a mix of opinions all across, and I guess, do we advertise it like that, and see what our feedback is from the public here?
Well, you know, like I said, I'm requesting we have a special meeting with the sheriff to discuss this.
I would like to do that also.
And per the rules and procedures, I need to put it right, and I can...
Well, I think we, I mean, the sheriff wants all SORs. He wants all school resource officers. And he, he's made that statement. And when he called me and told me about the academy wouldn't train the SSOs, and Mr. Cooley would sign off on them, you know, he, he said, I can deal with a hybrid. So, I don't, I don't know where we're coming up with, you know, everybody's wanting, part of us is wanting a mixture of both, and some of us is wanting all school resource officers. So, I mean, what kind of questions are we going to ask the sheriff that we already, that we don't already know?
Well, one thing, you know, he talked about the three vehicles. You know, could he spare a fourth vehicle? And give us four vehicles this year? We hired eight SROs, and then next year, we buy four vehicles this year, and then next year, probably with the vehicles he would give us, we had to buy four more. Now, you got eight new vehicles, and you don't have to worry about it in seven, eight, 10 years. Because if they're going from the school and back, you know, they're not gonna put that many miles on the vehicle. And despite what Mr. Hale said, a marked police car is deterrent, whether it's parked in front of a convenience store or a school.
So, you're talking about...
Parked on the side of the road, I guarantee you gonna sweat off.
Exactly.
Can I ask a question about, I know it doesn't come to numbers, but since this is budget. Just, and also because I want to try to understand the better, but, so we've got 216,000 for four SROs, right now, tentatively in the budget.
Yes.
And 212 for 14 SSOs. Or 200, yeah, 212,000. Well, minus the 50,000 in possible grant, I guess that brings it down to 162.
Yeah, I mean, the budget, yes.
Oh, yeah. So, that's 378, roughly. Compare that to what it would cost eight SROs, and I'm sorry, I know you all discussed this last time after I left, but what's a rough number for that?
417, 417, 864.
Eight SROs?
Stephen's over.
So, we're really not looking, and I know vehicles are separate, but we're really only looking at what?
You're looking at 800...
This was...
800 and some thousand recurring cost every year.
The salary and benefits is on the top, and keep in mind, this is what we're looking at the grant, but the salary and benefits is $391,000 a year for eight full-time officers.
So, you're saying the eight full-time officers, the total would be 635,000, 608 recurring cost every year?
Not recurring cost every year. A lot of the one-time equipment is vehicles and stuff like that that would not reoccur, plus AR-15.
What we need to know is recurring, what I need to know is recurring cost every year that...
The recurring cost is what I've got listed, there's the $26,000 on top of it.
So, be 243, 864.
So, 391 plus 26,420,000 dollars?
So, a penny and a half tax increase per year, a year.
And I, and I think that's why, I mean, he mentioned the numbers from Prince William. Prince William realized they can't afford right now to go and put school resource officers in every school right off the bat from where they are.
Eight officers wouldn't put one in every school, would it?
No.
No, but, you know, looking at the placement, if you put one at Ruritrite High Schools and Middle School, which is in one building, you've got one at George Wood and the Technology Center, which is, you know, on the same campus. You split one between Spiegel and Ruritrite Elementary School. Give one full-time to Scott, because it's Middle School. You split one between Spiller and Max Metta. And you split one between Jackson and Shepherd. And that leaves you a floater to cover schools, you know, elementary schools that are not being covered, and sharing too, or somebody's at. This is what I jot at that.
And the other cost-saving option, which may not be popular, but the other cost-saving option is, you save, and it's just, the numbers that I showed there on the differences in the salaries from the SSO and the SRO, is primarily benefits. You save a tremendous amount of money if you do it as part-time school resource officers in some of the locations, as opposed to full-time school resource officers. Part-time SSOs would come, part-time SROs would come in close to the same budget as what your SSOs are.
And that would put them...
Because you're paying hourly thing, you don't worry about a vehicle, or you take some of these old vehicles, and you set the old vehicle in front of the school, they don't drive it home, they don't drive it there, but if they ever need to have a vehicle, they have a vehicle.
I mean...
But, then you don't, they're back under the sheriff's control, but you're not paying additional $20,000 in benefits, you're running it like you're running the courthouse security program.
I mean, and I'm fine with that, I'd rather, to me, I'd rather have them than the SSOs. You know, if that's what we thought to do.
Did you ever get anything back on the liability policy?
Yes, I did get a liability policy back, and it is still in works. But, for covering 10 schools, is estimated to be about $8,000.
A year.
A year. I put $10,000 in the budget, in the updated numbers that I'm putting in there, of $10,000, just to make sure everything's covered. They said it would be between 6 and $8,000.
How much coverage is that?
I don't have any of the details yet. They are, they are putting their whole flyer together to go with that, but they, they are working on that.
That's basically how courtroom security work?
Courtroom security is, they are part-time employees under the sheriff. They primarily are, there may be a couple vehicles assigned to a couple of the courtroom security, I don't know if there are or not, but they don't have vehicles assigned to them. They show up at work, they work their shift, they alternate their shifts or whatever, and they go back. But, folks, we can advertise it, you know, as we are, and decide how we want to appropriate that money. If you decide you want to move $200,000 out of SSOs, and move $200,000 into part-time school resource officers, you know, when we go to adopt the budget, we can do that. It's generally the same amount of money.
Well, and the reason I wanted to meet with the sheriff is to answer Tim's question. You know, we talked about the one-time equipment cost. And, you know, y'all talked about the PAF money and all that. You know, to talk to them and say, you know, would you help us out on this one-time equipment cost, if we let you have the PAF money for a year?
Well, I still think if we're footing the bill for the school resource officers, any ticket money they're riding out on interstate, the county needs to recoup 100% of that money. Because it's the taxpayers that's paying for it.
Well, then that would be more beneficial to do actual eight, or, you know, the more full-time SROs instead of...
Yeah, I agree, I mean, you know, but that's one thing that we, we can control the money, because it's all general fund money. We just happen to separate it in the PAF.
If they were part-time, Brian, could they still go out on interstate and write tickets?
If they're certified.
Yeah.
What if they have a vehicle?
If they have a vehicle.
Not if they keep their certification of them.
I mean, if they're gonna be part-time, they have to keep their certification.
Right, I mean, they'd have to, they'd be certified. Whether or not he would have an extra vehicle for them to go out on the interstate. Is basically what it would boil down to.
Right now, no.
No, because if there's one or two wrecked, which I know there's one right now, they usually have to share.
And, and that's all part of that negotiation and discussion about it, about, you know, it's beneficial for the sheriff to put some PAF fund towards some of these items, and be able to do that.
I mean, I was just trying to think, I mean, in my mind, I was thinking, okay, I drive school bus. They've got us working eight hours a day, I mean, four hours a day is what they're saying we work. We can drive so many extra trips before we get to that point that we're not considered part-time. So, if you had any part-time SROs, they could be in some of their time on interstate writing tickets.
Really, the only time they would have, part-time would have, is like during the school year, that school was out that day, they had a teacher's work day or something. That's really the only day that they'd be out, in the summertime, they couldn't, when school was out, they couldn't be out writing tickets, because they'd be over their allotted hours.
You don't need them during that time, they're school resource officers.
I don't, I think you'd be hard pressed to find somebody to write tickets.
Yeah, because what do they benefit from that?
I don't know, I mean, you go to Carroll County, there'd be 25 an hour.
Hardly make anything an hour, I don't know if you're gonna find, it would be hard to find someone to do that, I would think, just because it's a safety issue. But, if they did it...
All right, y'all want to recess, and come back on Friday at 1 o'clock, and have the sheriff come up here and talk to you?
You can, I won't be here. If that's what the board wants to do. I won't be back until next Monday night.
Do it after the meeting next day. We got a meeting next week.
We got a board meeting next, um...
Have two public hearings.
Two public hearings next Tuesday night.
And I've had more calls with people afraid we're gonna blow away with the noise ordinance. I had more people call me this week than I had called when we was, we was dealing with it to begin with.
Well, at the 8th, we have got to advertise our budget. Or advertise it on the 12. So, the 8th, we've got to have, you know, and basically, and, and, you know, the only item we haven't discussed on today is... item we haven't discussed on today is, you know, the tax increase. What was shown in your budget was the five cents. That brings in an estimated one-point-one million dollars.
And how to take care of the school debt service?
That takes care of the school debt service, and it, it doesn't quite take care of the full cost of the school resource officer, school security officer program. That was four-hundred-thousand dollars, four-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars is what we're looking at there between the two.
Now, we had four-hundred tonight for the...
Well, that's, and that's just coming out of reserves, out of, um...
Well, you can't take, you can't, we can't take recurring costs out of reserves. I mean, you reserves end up completing your reserves.
I mean, basically, if you're doing George Wood High School, and you're gonna do some combination like this, it's four-hundred-thousand dollars. If you're going to go to all SROs, whatever, you're probably gonna be at close to five-hundred-thousand dollars in annual cost, you need to go up to six cents to cover school resource officers. I, you're basically looking at, you're adding, you know, you're adding eight-hundred-thousand plus in debt, and you're adding because of the change from the sheriff not funding any of that out of the PAF. You're adding that cost directly to you on. So five cents is not even covering the additional items you're adding to your budget. You're still leaving yourself in a hole coming forward, and I hate to be the bearer of bad news on that, but, now, you know, growth or any of the other things we look at can help out, but, um...
I mean, if we go with eight resource officers full-time, we're cooping, how many months, two months they're off, and so many days throughout the year, a hundred percent, a hundred percent of the ticket money, that, then that would bring it back down to probably five cents.
Well, has anybody asked the sheriff, does anybody ask the sheriff if the fees paid for them for two months?
I mean, that's what I'm saying, you know...
I know, he said he, he wanted total control of them, and I took that meaning he wanted, when they weren't in the schools, that they would be writing tickets for the sheriff's department.
We need to talk to the sheriff, we need to all be on the same page. There's too many questions. Just when do y'all wanna do it? When can we do it? What date do you leave, Tim?
Tomorrow morning.
We can do it next Tuesday at five o'clock before the board meeting. We just gotta wrap it up by seven o'clock, or stay afterwards that night and get it done. Planning commission's in here on Monday night.
Tuesday at five, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Is that good with y'all?
Yeah.
Cory?
I should be able to get here. I just ran into a problem today, I got home, didn't have no trucks.
Well, Cory's looking at it like sad puppy, I wasn't sure what that was.
Do we need that? Well, I guess we need a little bit of a break in between.
Five o'clock.
And we can do it at four o'clock if you wanna do that, make sure you've gone for a break.
I was thinking, I didn't know five-thirty would work better for people, if that would be long enough.
It doesn't work for you, Charlie, so...
Five's better than four.
Yeah, me too. I was going the opposite direction, I was gonna say five-thirty.
I was gonna say, I mean, if you give, give before four-thirty, I either will be late or have to try to find a sub, which, I mean, I don't have a problem finding a sub.
I think five would be fine. I don't think it'd, it'd be two hours discussion.
Are there any other budget items on anything else that anybody has?
No.
We, we'll have on the next agenda the revised budget schedule for adoption, unless you all wanna go ahead and adopt that revised budget schedule tonight, and that was to go ahead and move the public hearing out till the next day. It was in the board package, I can print it and give it to everybody if you wanna do that, or just put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
To revise it, to revise, that's how we voted on it.
Did not vote on it, we discussed it, but we didn't vote on it at the last meeting. You want me to just print it to everybody and let you see it, and then we can go ahead and vote on it tonight?
Oh, I'm, I think I looked at it, I don't think I have any problems with it.
Yeah, no, no one had any problems with it at the last meeting and recommended it, but we didn't actually vote on...
Well, I entertain a motion to approve the revised budget calendar.
It's on the...
Second.
Second.
That is saying that we will have the public hearing on the school board and county budget on May twenty-second. We will come back on May twenty-third and review the public hearing comments, and we will adopt the budget either on June twelve or June twenty-ninth.
Is that a day or night meeting?
It is a day meeting, but we'll come back at seven o'clock that night for the public hearing, yes.
Yes.
And then we'll come back on the twenty-third discussion.
Yeah, twenty-third, we've always had the day after...
What time is it, twenty-third?
Whatever time y'all wanna set it for.
Usually do it at seven, or no.
We usually do it up to the day.
Nine o'clock. That's what we usually do.
Yeah.
I'm fine doing it in the afternoon, but...
Oh, I don't care, we do it in the afternoon, it don't bother me.
We can set the time on that as we get closer to it.
They what?
Yeah.
Adoption will be June twelve.
And it, I mean, we can, I mean, we have waited till June the thirtieth to adopt the budget, I mean, it really don't have to...
Technically, we can adopt one till the state adopts one, right?
No, you can.
So what did we just say?
You can.
The twenty-third to be announced?
Yeah.
Do we need to vote on that? I'm sorry.
Yes, I had to call for, yeah, all in favor, say aye, aye, opposed.
I'd like to summarize, everything is in, lined up where we wanna go, except we'll have final discussion on tax rates, and we will have final discussion on SSOs and SROs.
We need to recess until Monday or adjourn?
We can adjourn and just announce...
We can adjourn, you can announce, we've got plenty of time to advertise it.
Yeah.
Okay, if nothing else, come forward to board, at this time, we are adjourned.